Followed work session of the Isabella County Board of Commissioners to order and stand for the pledge, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, a roll call, please.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Here.
Mr. Henry?
Here.
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 Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up would be approval of the agenda. We'll start out with general public comments. We don't have any presentations or special reports, no appointments to boards or commissions. Brings us down to committee reports, Finance and Administration Committee.
Finance and Administration Committee is all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Criminal Justice and County Affairs Committee.
All set.
Very good. And Human Resources and Public Works Committee.
Human Resources and Public Works Committee is offset, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have no intergovernmental affairs, no administrator controller issues, no unfinished business. Item 11 there, we will have two closed sessions. One to discuss collective bargaining agreement strategy and one to consider the lease or purchase of real property. And then we will have general public comment and announcements and adjournments. So is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No movement.
Then moved and supported, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. We have an agenda and we'll start out with general public comments. Anyone for general public comment?
My night was almost ruined.
Trouble with first.
Good evening, County Lead Bills, Union Township liaison. I just wanted to let everybody know that we have recently, late last week mailed out our survey for the citizens to fill out. We really like every citizen to fill that out, so we really depend on that information to make decisions on our.
Seeing no one else, we'll move right along. We don't have any presentations, no appointments, Committee Reports, Finance and Administration Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is considered ratifying and placing on file the adjustment list dated November 2nd, 2023. So we have a little different structure in this report in that when we had to close the building quickly, we didn't have access to the checks and so once we were able to get back in and get those, all those accounts payable do appear here. There's a number of them that do go over the 5,000. They haven't been identified on a front page. But I've looked at them. I have a couple of questions on a couple of them. But if there's any questions on the others, unless you want me to, I can go item by item over the 5,000. Otherwise, I'll just focus on my own questions. First one is, on the very first page of the invoice report, professional service industry. It has project maintenance, Isabella County Correctional Facility. Says professional services. That's not Clark Construction, that's not Integrated Architecture.
So, let me get my speaker on. So remember there, the board approved a contract with PSI for, we had to have an independent third party do testing, right? Clark can't test their own work, if you will. So when they pour concrete, PSI comes out to make sure that it has the right mixture, that the truck's been spinning as long as it's supposed to, right? They do tests out in the field to make sure the concrete has the right consistency, if you can name. They tested the soils on the project. They, there's a whole litany of tests that they do to test the work that we need the third party for, that Clark can't do for us. So those bills come through. It's still part of the USDA budget. So we still do get some money back, if you will. PSI is part of the project budget.
That was all part of the project budget? Okay.
It's just a portion we pay rather than Clark. Like Clark pays most of the subcontractors on the project and we pay Clark. This one, we had to pay directly because the contract couldn't be between Clark and them.
Got it. Thank you.
Great question.
Get about, get past about the eight pages of the Commission on Aging Payments and get down to parks. I have a question on parks. Zenenberg asphalt, it's listed as new equipment. Is that equipment or did you put down asphalt? Okay. Well, I was confused when I saw the new equipment. Didn't make sense to me, but.
That 978 line is what we use for capital expenditures like that. So she's appropriate to use the line. Maybe the line is a little misnamed.
Anybody have any questions on the invoice list? Any other bills that are reported here? And then going on to the adjustment list then, again, they're basically moving sales tax, paying early to get a discount or avoid a late fee. I see Clark Construction, we had avoided check because of an amount of about $2 or something was off and was redrafted. But other than that, I think they're all very familiar adjustments that we've had many times in the past. Questions on either adjustment list again or the invoice list? We'll move this forward then to tonight's meeting.
Second item for the Finance and Administration Committee is to consider approving the annual contract with Secure Alarm Systems, Inc. for the period of October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2024 in the amount of $51,120 and authorize the board chairperson to sign the same. We have with us Director Ray, who's going to give us the lowdown on.
Good evening. This is the annual contract we usually sign in the beginning of October. It's taken a little bit longer, but here it is. It went up a little bit because our equipment's getting older and everything is kind of needing an upgrade. But it's still not too bad and they have kept it down all the previous years. So it's what we need and this is for all the buildings, trial court, COA, the Sheriff's Department and our building as well. And the public realm. We'll get to the next.
Just a quick question. I'm kind of thinking out of the box. You know, we have aging equipment that we need to replace. We're not going to be using that building for, you know, six to eight months, maybe a full year. Is there any, did anybody even inquire the company to see if we could take that portion out of the building contract at this point?
I have. They're doing stuff now that we're going to be billed for, so there's going to be some kind of credit back. But right now, I just wanted to get the contract through because to even work with us, you know, we already, you know, haven't paid them for a whole month and a half. So I wanted to get the contract through. I will work out the savings and the credit. You know, because yes, we won't be using our building and our cameras will be down and everything in that building will be down. So.
It'd be nice to save enough money to upgrade some of our equipment. Thank you.
Ray, I did have a question about replacing the entire system possibly next year. Could you speak to that?
Yes, everything is past its life. The servers, the software that we look at our video with, the switches, the cameras themselves, and the way that the cameras connect to the system in many areas is old technology. So it was going to be considered to put in an RFP and put it towards the 2025 budget when the sheriff went to his new system. You know, no sense keeping two running. So we thought we'd run through with this system one more year and then put it out there because the trial court, COA, and the county need better equipment at this point. Everything's, the servers went in in 2015. So we are, but they are excellent servers. I wouldn't have suggested this. These have been some of the best servers I've had.
What we have will suffice and so we can get that RFP back.
Yeah, when everything, even the software needed to be updated, I'm like, we need to put it out there because your amounts, I got to make sure you're giving us the best price. So we had talked about it, talked about it with the administrator and we held off one more year. Kind of good that we did at this point, but you know, just to get by until the sheriff went to his new building and then we would look to service the rest of the buildings on them, on secure alarm security.
The questions? Hearing done, we'll move this item to our regular board session this evening.
A third item is consider approving the annual contract with Secure Alarm Systems Incorporated for the period of October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2024 in the amount of $3,336 for the Public Defender's Building and authorize the board chair to sign the same. So it's basically same purpose for the contract. A little smaller building. It's separate because that building came into play after our major contract. Any questions? Actually, it's $132 less, so we did have a little savings. It feels sorry for us. Hearing done, we'll move this then to our meeting tonight.
Director, fourth item is to consider approving the wage study proposal in agreement with Amy Sell LLC for the fee of $36,975, which does not include potential expenses for travel, FOIA, and/or post-project consultations. Authorize the board chairperson to sign the same. And I believe Administrator Frost, we have someone from Amy Sell representing that firm?
We do. Bill, I'm apologizing if I slaughter this name. I'm going to say Bill Shakora.
Perfect.
Excellent.
Yeah, as you know, I'm Amy's husband and got a chance to come up and meet Nicole and a couple of other people during our you know, meeting about a month ago.
So as I in finance last week, the county did let the RFP in late August for the wage study. We were very lucky to have Amy Sell Talent show up for the pre-bid meeting. That's mandatory for our procurements and it sets the bidder pool. So even though Amy Sell knew they were the only firm that could present an administratively complete proposal because they had come to that pre-bid meeting. I think they really worked hard to present a very comprehensive proposal. I think they put their pencil to it and came up with a very good price. I think they have great references for the work that they've done. They clearly have the capability to do the study and they have an aggressive timeline that meets more than meets the timeline that we had stated in the RFP. They're talking about 20 weeks. I recognize with our current situation of being dislocated from our building might cause a little more work in terms of meeting with departments. But I think it's still a fine time, fine time to undergo the study. And it's a great, it's a great company to undergo the study with.
I have a question. Are county commissioners going to be included in this wage study?
Yes, specifically. Specifically, we said in the RFP and it was reiterated in the proposal. We're seeking input from employees, department heads, electeds, administration, and the Board of Commissioners. And we don't need to stop there. You know, it's at all levels. We recognize that was a flaw of the last study. People are still talking about that flaw. We're not going to repeat that. So it's going to be a very transparent process. And we talked to Mr. Shakora at the pre-bid meeting too.
Thank you.
Please, Chairman.
I was wondering, how many hours were you expecting either total or per week for the 20 weeks to put in on this project proposal?
Was that question for me?
Yes.
Oh, you know, I honestly don't know. Amy, unfortunately, she teaches on Tuesday evenings and couldn't make it. I don't know the answer to that question. I could certainly ask her that, get back, get back if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, because I was just looking over the proposal. If we use the $110 an hour post-project fee, that would be about 16 hours, a little over 16 hours a week that is proposed to be used on this over the 20 weeks. It seems like, and that's just one, would be one FTE, right, for 16 hours. So seems a little low. So I didn't know if for this project you were more hours than that?
I believe it is. Again, I can't speak to it with, I can't be definite, but my, I know just the way, you know, her company cost structure is, you know, she does have more junior people who certainly aren't billing out at $110 an hour. And I'm sure, and I know they've already started working on this and will be involved. So I'm sure, you know, the average number would be less than that. And that that 110 you're looking at would be, you know, probably a more senior person doing follow-up work because I think the assumption was that would probably be, you know, just higher level work.
The intention always in county policy is when we have these reclassification requests that would set professional company to make the determination. And so that's why it was written in the RFP to make sure and give us what are your costs for continued work with us? Because clearly, if they do our wage study, that's who we're going to want to reach out to for reclassification justification when we have those in the future. So this more sets up what we pay them going forward. And again, perhaps if you're interested in knowing, then Amy Sell can perhaps, you know, respond with an estimate of those hours.
It's not so much, I just want to be comfortable in the fact that I know that they're putting in their proposal the correct number of hours. I'd hate for the study to come up insufficient or short. And so we've, you know, we've got to look at this, you know. I'd also like to know what they'll need in, they list in their communication method in the proposal, list of comparable organizations when requested. And does that mean that we're providing them with the job descriptions, the list of comparable organizations?
Probably, I haven't had a kickoff meeting with them certainly at this point. But when, so when we have union negotiations, those are the comparables. At least that's the comparables when we wrote the RFP that we meant to talk about. So yes, those are set by negotiating standards, right? It's those closest to us in population and SEV.
Well, those parameters are very relative to whatever, what the administration feels is deemable for them, right? Because I mean, I could say. We don't, we've got seven different police departments here in the area, but is corrections more applicable to look at other county? Or not? And that would be along with your union, but you know, we probably have, you know, our CDL drivers, you know, we're competing with the local area and not with other CDL drivers in other counties. I do understand that we have other counties that we would be the same size and all this. But my biggest concern is that, you know, we don't look like we're presenting the comparable organizations and therefore like pigeonholing what the compensation would be and which would be unhelpful for us because it's not the competitive rate that we're working against. It's a rate that's in another county like in County Zoo, which we're not competing with or whatever, you know. So there are some concerns and hoping to get a few of them ferreted out before.
Yeah, let me maybe address a couple of those. Your first concern, I think, had to do with, you know, whether, you know, how many hours would be spent. I will say Amy has never sought a change order for any work she's done. I mean, she's agreed to do this work for this price and if she underbid it, that's kind of on her. And she's done a lot of work for other municipalities. So I think it was, I'm sure she did a good job of bidding it out appropriately. In terms of, you know, getting comparables, yeah, that was part of our pre-meeting, you know, that we'd get some information. You know, but Amy has, you know, a database, you know, that has lots of information and she has work she's done for other counties. I know that, for instance, you know, Nicole told me, the employees, at least some of them work 37 and a half hours a week, not 40. So there would be adjustments, you know, for that as well. So I think, you know, she is, she is an accountant by training originally, so definitely a numbers person and I think will, you know, address all those issues appropriately.
I think too, the proposal listed as examples of comparables, CMU and the City of Mount Pleasant and the Tribe, and certainly those I think are our big competitors as far as attracting employees. Of course, you want more comparables than just those three, but those are the three big ones that we compete with, I think, that were listed in the proposal as examples. So that's a good start. I got a couple of questions and I don't know if you can answer these, but when you do these wage studies, how do you factor in the benefits? Because I know benefits vary from place to place and they're, I think, sometimes hard to compare. I guess, can you speak to that? How the benefits are weighed in when you do a wage comparison?
Yeah, that's something Amy and I have talked about. We've actually tried to quantify it. Like so she's an accountant, I was an engineer. We've actually spent a lot of time together trying to do that. It's difficult, to be honest, to truly quantify it. But clearly, a defined benefit retirement is going to be valued different than a defined contribution retirement. And, you know, qualitatively, everyone knows that. You know, it's maybe a little trickier to quantify it. I mean, certainly you can. I think there are actuarial tables, et cetera. You literally can try to quantify that, but that's definitely on our radar. And my understanding is you've got both. You've got defined benefit and defined contribution in the county. So that is going to be, you know, an issue we're going to have to look at.
Okay. But my other question is this estimate of five months, provided that the county does everything that we're supposed to do, how firm is that?
Well, firm. I mean, you know, yeah, we can, if it takes longer to get a response or if with holidays, you know, scheduling, whatever. You know, I think as Nicole said, I think we were targeting a date that was actually before the requested timeframe. And, you know, if because of holiday schedules or whatever, we need to add a week or two and that's still, you know, within the original request, you know, I think with your consultation with the client, you know, we would make adjustments if that makes sense.
Yep. There's a heavy lift on our end. Right? You know, we all have to do our heavy lift on our own to keep it on track.
This is a, kind of goes along with it. I know when we, before we adopted the budget, there were certain departments that were asking for reclassifications and they were denied with the intent that we're going to be having this study. And I know the Finance Committee, I can't speak for Chairman Hope, but I know I could speak for Embry and myself, we didn't want to approve a lot of reclassification requests only because we didn't want to set a precedent. But I think we've looked at the last few months, we've adopted quite a few reclassifications. And so we have set, I think, a precedent and we'll be looking at, what, a couple more yet tonight? And so I'm not sure who's hanging out there, but I know we had a request at one time from the Dream Commissioner and Tim Warner is going to be retiring real quick. And I guess at this point, where I said I was opposed to considering any reclassifications ahead of time, I think Mr. Sweeney said we should look at the things that are being considered and maybe we need to move before the wage study classification. So I guess I would invite maybe a couple of those departments that we've said no to. If you want to bring something forward, we can take a look at it because it's probably going to be challenging, especially the Dream Commission to replace Mr. Warner for his responsibilities. And if you've got some internal equities, so that's my piece. I don't want to have everything out of the bag, but you know, maybe we need to have some forgiveness because there's some time constraints or time points coming up before the study can be finished.
So I just.
Oh, go ahead.
I want to be clear on what has been approved by the board, at least for the last year and 10 months. We've, the board has approved restructure requests, right? Where an office comes to you and says, I have a, I have a grade six admin and what I really need because of all these things going on is a grade eight clerk. And so the board has looked at those and says, you're right, department. You don't need a grade six assistant. You need a grade eight clerk, as an example. That's different than saying my grade six should be a grade eight. Do you see the difference?
I do, but I guess there's a fine line between some of those.
Very, very fine, right? Very fine and creative, right?
We had a senior lawyer that was brought up because hired someone in at higher. And so they would be managing someone at, which we can't have, right, at the same level. And we raise their way. But there's one case right off the top of my head that was a reclassification. And it wasn't.
All of the attorneys were, right? All of the attorneys, except the chief law enforcement officer.
One under, above the lawyer that was hired in at a higher pay grade was brought to levels above because they were managing someone at their same pay grade. And we moved them up to pay levels.
That was.
A specific vote that we did for that particular one. It wasn't, it wasn't the one that we did for our lawyers. I'm just saying, there are cases out there where we have reclassified. I can, I can, I'm pretty sure there's another one, probably, if I didn't mind noting, but we've done a lot of reclassifying. And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with keeping, you know, an eye on it. We have to look at everything for each level, but this is something that we're going to have to do for the, and should be doing for the dawn of time. We shouldn't be, you know, saying, well, we need a third party in here to keep up with our HR. You know, we either, we either have to hire somebody or train somebody who can keep up. Or train somebody who can keep up with these employees' positions. Rates and reclassifications with the market. Every corporation does it. Every company I've worked for does it. It, you can't avoid it. You have to keep up with the market with each position. And uh, and we just need, once we pass. Basically, you know, this reclassification, that's gonna happen. We need to set in. A program of how we're going to deal with. Reclassifications, and. There are many ways we can do it, um, but we definitely need to. You know, come back after this reclassification and say, we need to do this ourselves, because we can't afford. To do this every four years by a third party. I mean, and.
And and so that's never the intention, right? I think the. Before the last wage study, I think the most recent wage study was done. In the eighties or nineties by William Rye. County policy is. When a reclassification request comes forward, we send it out to a professional third party. For that. Justification for where the position should be. The reason we're doing a wage study is because we don't, as a board, want to get mixed up in trying to set salaries of. Our employees based on.
That's what an HR department is here for.
Uh, HR department, I would say, is here to implement the wage structure put in place to implement the pay scales put in place, but. That structure, there's a reason it's a profession. There's a reason why we went out for an RFP for it.
I do know that the, the sequel study, study, after they were done, they offered training. To the administration. To, to do the classifications themselves. Um. I, you know, and policy is just what we set.
Absolutely.
Um, and if a policy is not working for us. And we always have to, you know, step back and. You know, do a major readjustment. Because, you know, it's.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I just, I want this classification to work out. And, but I also want us to have like. A real understanding that when the classification study is over. We've implemented it, we're not done.
Commissioner. Discussion says, we we very much need to have this study. It it's uh, it's timely. And we do need to con- consider. Uh, looking at requests before and after. Uh, if we make a mistake and we pay more, or we pay too few, it'll probably come out, you know. Definitely come out in the wash when we get the final study, so, and then we'll make the adjustments there, so.
Couple of things, I I I just say to Commissioner Swinney's comments. I'm not opposed to having that conversation. I think it's a conversation we need to have as to whether.
Total agreement.
Uh, we need to start doing our own. Classification.
I agree. I think we need to have a sys- system in place that we do it ourselves, and I think we can, we can, we can develop that system over time. Get enough, enough heads together. I think we can pull, we can pull that to- together, make that work.
I think we need to talk about that. Um. In the meantime, uh, this wage study here, I think, I think we need this to get us going. Um, and I like their proposal. I like a lot of things about it, but I like the chart on page fifteen. Kind of spells out. Uh, Amy cell responsibilities and county responsibilities. I like that. It's got a very good timeline. Uh, progress review meetings. Uh, review and provide timely feedback, extensive follow-up with survey participants. It's, it's all good stuff. I think, I think this is going to be a good process. And I'm very happy with the timeline. Get it going.
Great. I know I have one comment. As far as this wage study goes, I'm looking to our department heads and our electeds. To really set the standard for this robust. Uh, thorough communication with Amy sells people. I think it's going to be absolutely imperative that every department head and every elected official is very involved. And is very upfront and allows their people to speak freely, and again, there are no stone unturned. I want, I want everybody to be satisfied with this wage study when it comes out. Whatever that takes, because we need, we need a basis. To move forward with what Commissioner Swinney is talking about. We have to have a firm foundation to start with, and without that firm foundation, we're back to where we are now, and I, I do not want that for the folks who work for Isabella County. Commissioner.
When I got on the board, um. We had a lot of. What I would consider infighting of departments. And Michelle has opened the door. And made it so that we can hear these things, but I think as a board, we need to listen and listen to all our people. Listen to what's going on and be able to adapt. Uh, take the wage study, take whatever reasoning that they have and uh. Work as a team.
I'd piggyback on. Mr. Hutson. And Mr. Swinney. Once we have this firm foundation, I really like what Mr. Swinney. Brought up prior, where we depend on our department heads and our electeds. They're in charge of their departments, they're in charge of their budgets, it's up to them to control their spending. Up to us to monitor how they control their spending. But I think they should be in charge of who they hire and how much they pay and make it work. I don't know if that's agreeable to this good gentleman, but I think it's a, to me, that's how I'm used to working, and it works. I've never had a system that didn't work unless you had department heads who were incapable. Or had other ulterior motives. If they were upfront, non-honest, and were trying to do the best in running their department. Uh, I got positive results, so. That's kind of a good consideration to take up maybe later. Any other comments, gentlemen? Thank you for that. Hearing none, we'll move this to our regular session this evening.
Mr. Shakara, thank you.
Sure, yeah, thank you, and on behalf of Amy, um, she, you know, sends her appreciation for uh. Giving her the work, and I'm sure you'll be happy. She also, by the way, I I mentioned she teaches a class. She teaches a class in project management. And she, and I think, you know, one of the issues, uh, Commissioner Hope raised, had to do with project management, you know, she, she's really good at this kind of stuff, so. Involving people, making sure things move along, so I think he'll be very happy with uh, with that aspect of the job.
Okay. Forward to. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Yes.
Our uh, next item then is a discussion regarding the Isabella County Sheriff's Office. And correctional facility projects funding. So we had a request from uh, a volunteer representative, uh, Mike Faver. And uh, he wanted to basically say. We probably don't have enough money in the budget for completion of this correctional facility. That change orders. Come, still coming up or anticipated in the future is going to put us over budget. And I know I've been involved with smaller projects, parks and recreation projects, and I know sometimes you have contingencies about five to ten percent. It's not unusual, and something as technical as that building, that building the size. Would not have been unusual. However, what we actually budgeted on a forty-eight million dollar project was two percent. So, you know, as these change orders come forward, it's not anybody just trying to line their pocket at the county taxpayer expense. They usually come forward with very good reasons, things that were overlooked. Changes that were made because of more operational efficiency, and uh, they do go through the process of. Clark Construction reviews it, sees what they can do to. Uh, you know, ma- Keep it on, in cost as much as possible, but eventually it comes before the. Finance Administration and then the County Board to look at change orders. And I think High Clark Construction has been doing a very good job managing the budget. Uh, we still have some funds left. But uh, I think the message, I think I wanted to. Basically come out from my discussion at committee was that don't be surprised if we exceed the budget by some amount. I don't think it's gonna be a great amount, but it's probably gonna be. I'm not gonna, if we're, if we're looking at a five percent, we're only at two percent, and that was seven hundred fifty thousand, we're probably looking at a million and a half, two million dollars uh, in addition.
One thing I did want to point out in our conversations with Mike Ferber. Is that he is looking to the winter of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. If there's continued delays, we may have to push. Completion into that timeframe, and he feels that uh, that's going to incur extra expense, and we should. Begin looking at setting aside. Setting up a plan to set aside some kind of a contingency to address that. So we're not caught off guard. I know Clark Construction has reassured us, they will give us ample time, and we will know well in advance. But he just wanted us to start. Put a, a. A little thought there in our back of our minds to keep this. Uh, in mind and just consider this when our budget for twenty twenty-five, that we may need this. I know, uh, we had conversations with the sheriff about the repeater system within the uh, jail project. Roughly three hundred thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more that we, we may not need and could be used for. Uh, that potential contingency. Being part of that money, but with. Mr. Jolazowski is saying is that we could need another three or four hundred thousand. Before we get done, so we need to keep that in mind and begin making arrangements or making plans to have that available if we need it. If we don't, we don't, great, but. I like the fact that he's looking out for us.
That's what he gets the big bucks for.
So we're, we're not advocating to put anything more into contingency at this point, because you put the money in the contingency, it's there to be spent. But uh, we, we just continue on the project and uh, see how it rolls out, knowing that we have a good construction uh, manager in in charge of that project and budget. Any other comments, uh? Okay, we're not moving this on, we're just a discussion at this point.
The last item for Finance and Administration. Discussion regarding Isabella County Administration Building Asbestos Removal Cleaning and Rebuilding Expenses. Add on Administrator.
Yes, sir, so uh. Chairman Jelinski of Finance asked that this item be put on as we were discussing funding for the. Sheriff's Office and Correctional Facility says, well, we might as well start talking about. Funding for the big elephant in the county building. So bids are due tomorrow on the RFB that was released for the asbestos abatement. We're learning a little more about. What needs to happen to abate the building for asbestos. We're learning, you know, that ceiling tile, ceiling grid, lights come down, we're learning now ductwork. Has to be removed. We're. We're not anticipating, you know, carpet to stay. We know one interior wall. Of each space has to be removed to, to um, address wall cavities. In each space, so it's, it's really aggressive. Tomorrow, when the bids come in. Will know costs, um, presumed cost for abatement. But I fear that the abatement costs are the small part. I think the rebuilding is probably going to be a lot more expensive. The rebuilding, you know, new carpet, new ceiling grid, new ceiling tiles, but new, new cables. That are to code. Our fire suppression system is asbestos. We can't use it anymore. Right, so we'll likely, we don't know yet, likely have to put a fire suppression system in. That new HVAC system, we're gonna get it. Right, because the ductwork's got to come out, so. I know briefly, we talked at Finance about the city and their experience at a beautiful, in their beautiful Bourdon building, right? They, they, the, I think asbestos was part of the issue there, some lead contamination, and they received ten million dollars from the state for. Ab- abatement activities in the rehab, so we'll be looking into what kind of funding sources there might be there. But we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to come up with a good idea of what that stuff's gonna cost, whether we. Do some estimating or bids or or whatnot. We'll have a lot to discuss a week from today at your special board meeting at noon here in this room, I believe. We'll have the propose, the bids back from the abatement contractors. Um, the, our testing contractor, Northern Analytical, will have looked at those and and helped us to sort through those. So we'll, we'll know more Tuesday, and we can talk about those. And we'll know, we won't know more on the rebuilding, but. We'll continue discussions on it.
Mister.
So the reason I asked to have it taken to committee. I'm waking up at two, three o'clock in the morning, worrying about this and and the county's fiscal situation. I guess I'm taking it too personal, it's not. But it's important, and this is going to be multiple millions of dollars. On top of already a difficult financial situation. Money, I think, there's nobody probably gonna say any different. It's money we don't have. And so we need to find a way to start. Paying expenses now. And look at um. Additional revenues. How, how are we gonna come up with the money for this? We can't let it impact our jail project. We gotta have that, and now we're also looking at cash flow. We, in the past, we've had enough fund balance. That we didn't have to worry about cash flow, because most of our tax monies come in in the final quarter. Right, now we're gonna have to borrow money to be able to continue operations, so it's just one thing after another. My latest headache was, I woke up thinking, okay, we're gonna move, remove one half, or one sheet on the facing of a wall. Well, if they're gonna wet the ceiling. The other side, the other wall is gonna get wet. I don't know if that's uh, something that's gonna get stained or damaged. We may have, and just come up with both walls, and then we're also talking at moving into the next century, moving into the current century with electronics. You know, we, we may have to do some rewiring, so. I I'm thinking that there has to be more urgency as we move forward, and maybe it's not too soon to start. Coming up with the list of where we might. Consider making cuts if our millage doesn't pass next year. I don't think it's too soon to do that, and I think if we, we do that, and we start identifying where those cuts are gonna be made, we may make some advocates out there that's gonna work with us for this uh, millage. I'm thinking hats, you're working on a contract, maybe that contract should only be eight months. Because after, after the millage, if that millage doesn't pass, are we gonna have money for hats? There's gonna be a lot of things, it's gonna be very, very ugly if that millage doesn't pass, not including the. Considering the cost of this asbestos and rebuilding project, so. Um, I'm thinking that maybe this is something that we gotta keep on the front of the committee. And keep in the front of the members of the board. Decisions coming up.
Our, and most immediate concern is relocation. Right, we're, we're not in the places that we're going to exist for, now we're, we're estimating a year. At, at, at least.
And I think, you know, we had discussed it. Finance and Administration, we need to keep our. Minds open to the possibility, if, if they come back and say it's gonna be seven or eight million dollars to. Put us back in the building, do we need to start thinking about? Another building? Moving on to something else. You know, as opposed to trying to redo what we've already got, maybe like start fresh and start clean and. Start over, but the, I like the idea of moving into a, a temporary space that works for all of our departments. To give us some time to stop and be very uh, prudent. In this conversation about where we're gonna go next, given our financial situation over the next ten years. I think it's something we need to look at and be open to, so again, looking forward to our conversation next week. Let's see where it goes, but I think we all need to be cognizant of the fact that. We're gonna have to be very open-minded to a lot of different options.
Well. I I'm not sure that it's feasible to look at another building, because we're still gonna have to mediate the asbestos in this building. Or so, I mean, with the cost of per square foot, we're probably stuck with this building and.
Possibly.
I think so. I would be pretty surprised if the total cost of remediation and putting everything back together came even close to buying another building. I'm not really surprised. came even close to buying another building. I'm really surprised. I just, I mean, I don't know for sure. I guess time will tell, but um I think that's an unlikely scenario.
And I might be.
Well, hopefully we'll discuss a lot more next week and get Vice Chairman Jelinski some sleep.
I'll bring you up to date on my night, midnight nightmares.
Any other discussion, gentlemen?
No, I, I just say that I think we need to keep moving this along, I think um we'll have the proposals for the abatement here real soon, and we'll have that special meeting next week. We need to start thinking about phase two. I know Director Schumacher is gonna reach out to the city and see what they're gonna require for us to re-inhabit that building, what kind of code requirements. And we'll know a whole lot more than what we have to do. I was afraid that the interior walls didn't go to the decking, but he tells me that they do, so we're good there. Might be some holes in them that need to be repaired, but and, and I wonder too if it's absolutely necessary, and maybe it is, but if it's absolutely necessary to strip those interior walls on one side. I mean, I'm sure some material has fallen down in there, possibly. But if you encapsulate that inside there. It, how often is that gonna get disturbed, I guess? It's just one question that I had on, on the whole abatement process, but I think we need to help, keep this thing moving along and start thinking about the next steps of uh putting it back together.
The comments, questions, gentlemen? Well, hearing none, we'll move this to our regular board sessions evening.
Chairman, that concludes. Completes the work of the Finance Administration Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioners, and that brings us down to Criminal Justice County Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first up, we have Consider Approving Isabella County Friend of the Court Participation in the Title IV D Cooperative Reimbursement Program, beginning October first, twenty twenty three and continuing through September thirtieth, twenty twenty eight for the grant amount of four million, six hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars, twenty-nine cents with reimbursements amounts not to exceed three million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents and authorize the board chair to sign the same. I think we have Carrie Curtis, Court Administrator, what this? That's a five-year agreement.
Good evening. So, yes, we, this is a cooperative reimbursement grant. We do these in five-year increments. Um, this is pretty standard, um, and it's part of the four D services that are federally mandated by the Social Security Act of nineteen seventy-five, so this has been going on for some time. It covers most of the expenses, um, reimburses them at about sixty-six percent of the friend of the court's operational expenses. There are some, you know, little bits of things that are not covered. But as a general rule, as you can see, it's, it's a four million dollar expense and we get back three million plus of that, so um, it's just a pretty standard thing that we have to renew every five years, so we're just asking for support and signing that contract.
Hey, is there any questions? Pretty standard, uh, it's a big amount, so uh seeing none, we'll move this forward to tonight's session. Thank you, Carrie.
All right, second item is Consider Approving the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Four Swift Insure Sanctions Probation Program Grant Contract in the Amount of Two Hundred Twenty Three Thousand. And authorize Board Chair's person to allow the Court Administrator to utilize DocuSign. Carrie, thanks for sticking around for this one as well, we have a few here. Run the other commissioners through this year's agreement.
Sure, I think we have Carolyn Johnson also, who is the coordinator, so, oh, she can't. She just texted me and said she can't get hers to work. So um the Swift Insurance Grant this year is another standard one that we typically um bring to you every year. Um, this is um very exciting because it is only five hundred dollars less than what we ask it, ask for in ten thousand more than last year. So we are very excited that that will pay for um all of the programming activities um associated with this particular grant. So the county doesn't have to fund much of any of it, so we're very excited about that.
Are there any uh questions from Commissioners on this reoccurring? All right, we'll move that on to tonight's meeting.
Okay, next, excuse me, next up, we have Consider Approving the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Four Adult D W, D W I Drug Court Grant Contracts in the Amount of One Hundred and Ten Thousand Dollars. And authorize the Board Chairman to allow the Court Administrator to utilize DocuSign to sign the same. And I think I seen Kate Mitchell up here, which is the grant coordinator on this. Kate, would you like to explain? We've had this program, what, since two thousand and three? Is that correct? I see her on the thing here, but I did not hear her. So Carrie, I said, I see Kate's.
Must be having the same problem that Carolyn had.
Problem, so I see her on, but she's silent, so.
Yeah, so this is the most we've ever received for this particular grant. Um, it is the same programming that we've offered over other, you know, the other years of the program. We did request one hundred and sixty-one thousand, um, and received one hundred and ten, which is forty thousand dollars more than last year. So again, that is all kudos to our outstanding staff who write these grants, um, and the excellent work that they do. Um, the, this, as you mentioned, has been in effect since two thousand and three. Um, it's very successful. I don't really know what else to say.
Yeah, is there any questions? Yeah, we're really pleasantly surprised that the amount actually went up, because it's been going down every year, so. It was a pleasant surprise, so uh any more questions? I'll see you then, we'll move that forward to tonight's session.
And. All right, the next item is Consider Approving Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Four Juvenile Drug Court Grant Contract in the Amount of Hundred Thousand, authorize Board Chair to allow the Court Administrator to use DocuSign. Do we have?
We do have Maria.
Yeah, is she? Actually, will we be able to hear her?
I see her.
Oh, looks like it. Hi, Maria. Yep.
Okay.
Excellent.
Connection issues. So, yeah, the juvenile drug court has been around since two thousand and six. And um every year we have applied for grants funds, and we receive them every year. This year we asked for a hundred and eight thousand, and we received a hundred thousand, um, which we're happy about. It's, um, it was seventy-five hundred more than we got last year. Um, so the grant funds will help cover my, will cover my salary, all cost of salary, with a teeny bit left over that will apply towards um either incentives or a, a screening program that I use for intake into my program. And we do use incentives as our part of our program, and we rely on childcare funds to help cover the cost of incentives. Um, some transportation costs, and we help families cover the cost of treatment when their insurance doesn't cover, so we're pretty excited, though, that um for the first time in a couple of years the grant will be enough to cover my entire salary, so, yeah, we're excited, thank you.
Are there any questions for this one as well? Excellent, uh, yeah, we're doing quite well with these related items with the courts. Thank you very much, everyone, for your work in grant process. And we'll move that on to uh tonight's regular session.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Consider Approving the Title IV D Cooperative Reimbursement for the Prosecuting Attorney Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Four Through Twenty, I think that should be twenty-eight, is that correct?
That's correct, it should be uh twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah, there's a little typo here, uh, and authorize the Board Chairman to sign the same. In grams, uh, we have Prosecutor Barbary here, and I believe the amount for the reimbursement is two hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and two.
Apologize for my casual attire tonight, uh, we're in the process of moving, and it's about eighty-five degrees in the upstairs of that building today, so. Um, this is the same request that Ms. Curtis has made in, in uh item number one for a different amount, but it is the, the same prom, uh premise, it is Title IV D monies uh for child support reimbursement from the state and federal government.
Are any more questions? Excuse me. Well, prosecutor, I came right from the field, so you're, you're, you're okay the way you're coming here, the way you are, so. Um, seeing none, we will uh move this forward to tonight's session and uh Mr. Chairman, that completes the work of the Criminal Justice Economic Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Commissioners and Prosecutor. Thanks for bringing us good news tonight.
Yes.
And we'll move on to Human Resources and Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our first item is Consider Approving Level One, Level Two, and Level Three Inspectors to a Pay Grade of Fifteen within an annual two thousand dollars. Inspectors possessing multiple licenses, maintain the current employee's step within the scale effective immediately. We have Timmy of Thor here, Community Development Director, to give us the details about this.
Good, good evenings. Um, as you see, I've given you quite a bit of information, there should be an outline um that I utilized a couple of um couple of committees ago to Human Resources for discussion purposes. Um, I did attach that to my staff report, but essentially, uh, what we have is um, some difficulty in finding inspectors uh for, uh, who are capable of being certified to be inspectors um, in the current wages, the current position that we sit. Um, our electrical inspector that we currently have came to us last February. Um, we did at that time, um, we always kind of keep a pool of contractors who may have some interest in becoming inspectors. Um, when we were in the hiring process in February of last year, uh, four of those five dropped out when they were forty-three thousand dollars. Um, these gentlemen or, or women need to have uh journeyman certifications prior to being able to obtain that uh, uh, that certification at the state. Um, and journeyman electricians are making sixty thousand dollars in the private sector, so to come to us for forty-three thousand just didn't make a lot of sense. We did have um one individual, Dan, uh, who is our current electrical inspector, he has resigned, he's got his certification. Part of the process uh of becoming certified and obtaining your license, you have to be sponsored by a government. So Dan um had went ahead and sacrificed, uh, took the job at forty-three thousand and nine months later has given us his uh letter of resignation, as he's now a certified inspector and can go elsewhere to do, to do work. Um, this is something that we experienced as well with our building official in twenty twenty, we had one, uh, two applicants, I believe, at that time. Uh, both of them were local, um, and we did hire the, the one that already was certified at that time. Um, so this is a problem, you can see in my staff report, I've taken a look at our local market. Um, City Mount Pleasant currently pays eighty-four thousand dollars for their building official, Union Township's pay range is between seventy-five thousand and ninety-one thousand. State of Michigan pays uh starting in the low sixties, and all of these numbers are fixed to our thirty-seven and a half, so they're not forty hour. If they're a forty-hour shop, we've, we fix this back to our seven and a half. Um, State of Michigan is just over sixty thousand dollars, um, starting salary going up to into the mid eighties. Um, if we don't find an inspector, we, we have two options, we either hire private sector um, or we turn it back over to the State of Michigan. Um, both of those options aren't any good for our citizens. Um, it's gonna cost them more money, it's gonna be slower services. Um, and the inspectors that will be utilized, private side and/or the State of Michigan, are gonna be making that greater amount of money. Permit fees are gonna cost our citizens more money. Uh, the services are gonna be slower. Uh, we'll see that, I think, in, in a, a, a number three coming up under Human Resources where Shepherd Public Schools is looking for us to do inspections for them, instead of going to the State of Michigan because of a timing issue. Uh, it's a slower process to go through the state. So the recommendation, uh, after taking a look at this and taking a look at um our, the, the current market um, our options, um, was to recommend moving the pay uh grade to a pay grade fifteen and maintain their step. Uh, there was this additional um two thousand dollar annual stipend that I spoke uh of in the staff report. And that is um relative to um some positions and some inspectors can carry multiple licenses. For example, um, back in two thousand and three, when I took over as a director, uh, we had a plumbing inspector and we had a mechanical inspector. Um, when our plumbing and mechanical inspector both left relative, right about the same time, within a few months of one another, we moved into hiring somebody who was able to be duly certified, and we went from two FTEs um, two uh, uh, sets of retirement benefits, two insurances, to one FTE, so it saved us some money. Um, and we didn't, we're, we're not compensating that inspector in any way, so if we can encourage and provide incentive to any inspectors uh, to come to Isabella County and provide them with a two thousand dollar annual stipend for holding multiple licenses, I think that's, that's greatly beneficial to us, uh, as well as providing them with some financial benefit um in the long run. Um, in doing so, and this is all one staff report, if you want, I can kind of stop here, because this deals with this first, this first issue of inspectors. Uh, but there is also an incidental um, um rollout from this. Moving these inspectors up to a pay grade fifteen puts them right up against uh the director's position, my position. Uh, so these are direct subordinates of mine, um, and the policy of the county has been for at least back to two thousand and one uh, when I moved from a zoning administrator position to a planner position, uh, which was created back then is a two-pay grade separation between your subordinates. Um, I think you see it in many departments. Um, not all of them are two, some of them are more, but um in uh the two that I did look at, which is Parks and Recreation and um uh, uh, Emergency Operations Center or Central Dispatch, uh, there's two pay grades of separation there. Um, all of the elected officials have a twenty-six percent uh separation gap. That is new, that's, that's new from the Seagull Water Study. Um, the deputy administrator and the administrator, there's a twenty-six percent uh separation gap between them. Um, to leave, um, if, if the inspectors were to move up to a pay grade fifteen, that would put about a five percent pay separation between myself and, and my subordinates. Uh, so in, in, in doing so, I would also ask that we, we move uh the director's pay from a pay grade sixteen up to a seventeen to provide that two-pay grade separation, uh, which has been policy of the county for many years.
Right, and, and like that stipend, I, that seems to me like that's a good investment, because if you had the the person with those dual licenses, like you said, there'd be less of, of the benefits for two people than one, and also uh quicker turnaround on, on economic development and that sort of thing, so.
Definitely, definitely.
Any questions or comments? Go ahead.
Just to comment, uh, just to piggyback on what Commissioner Marino said, the two thousand dollar stipend makes a lot of sense. You got somebody with two licenses, absolutely. And then obviously, we're having difficulty attracting and retaining these inspectors. And it's, I think it's obvious to us that we're not paying them enough. I think that's a, a simple one. Uh, and certainly, we don't want to turn this back over to the state, um, we don't wanna, we don't wanna slow down growth, we wanna make it easy to do business in this county, so.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm confused with the level one, level two, level three. Is that like mechanical building?
No, so in, in the Seagull Water Study, um, we did a separation um, due to the fact that there were multiple uh, uh, gentlemen in the office who have multiple licenses. So a level one inspector is an inspector who holds one certification. A level two inspector is, is a inspector who holds multiple um certifications. And a level three inspector was a inspector who was doing the building official duty and functions. So managing the project by project basis, not supervising anybody, but really managing a project by project basis. They were separated, a current pay grade, uh, eleven is our level one. Uh, a level two is um a pay grade twelve, and a level three is a pay grade thirteen. The reason that I am requesting to move them all to the fifteen and keep them together, as I've looked at the local market, State of Michigan. The reason that I am requesting to move them all to the fifteen and keep them together, as I've looked at the local market, state of Michigan. All those inspectors are in that same classification. State of Michigan certifies each one of those inspectors at whatever the AO two forty, I think it is. Uh, which is their sixty two thousand, whatever, starting. Um, so I just thought it was best that we move them away from like like um. That level one, level two, level three status, move them into a pay grade fifteen and then just offer that stipend out of two thousand dollars for them carrying multiple licenses.
But do you have full-time personnel for building? For mechanical, for electrical, for plumbing?
We have a. We have a full-time building official, building inspector. We have a full-time electrical inspector and we have a full-time plumbing mechanical inspector. So we have a duly licensed plumbing mechanical inspector and our building inspector is our building official.
And there's enough work uh in the county to to have the full-time people?
Yeah, so the Building Inspections Fund is is relatively healthy at seven hundred thousand plus um currently. Um, remember, the Building Inspections Fund is receives no general fund money. Um, and all of the work that is done by those inspectors um is full-time work. I mean, we're we're running ten, twelve, fourteen load a day some days. Remember, we also do provide contracts. We we do work for the city of Mount Pleasant. Uh, we do work for Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe, Clare County, Sheridan Township in Clare County, Grant Township in Clare County. And Surrey Township in Clare County. So we pick up additional revenue from other areas that takes our guys' time. That additional revenue that we generate allows us to keep our fees low for our citizens. They're not receiving any benefit. We're not paying them any extra money. They're paying us to keep our fees low to our residents, which is why. Our fee structure is so much lower than state of Michigan or any others, which is why it's not good for us to want to. Turn this over to the state of Michigan because they're going to pay, our citizens will pay a higher fee structure.
Thank you. Go ahead. So we have three full-time inspectors.
Excuse me.
How many part-time inspectors?
We currently have um our seasonal, we have two seasonals. Uh, we still can't find a seasonal elect, uh, I'm sorry, a seasonal. Mechanical inspector or plumbing or mechanical inspector.
So this only covers the full-time?
Only covers the full-time. Those seasonal guys are paid a whole different way. They're paid out um. Uh, at minimum wage plus a per inspection rate, uh, similar to what we charge when we provide services to other communities.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments?
I think I would like to add something. I mentioned in committees that um I I am not recommending that this go forward or the the driver. Um. Reclassification that's coming from the MRF. Because of the wage study and. We are trying to implement that and and get that um developed over the next twenty weeks, hopefully. So. I just feel like it's. If we're looking at. Professionally developing a classification compensation structure that is. Obviously broken now that we don't continue to to break it further. If if this is something that the wage study. Shows is necessary, there can be retroactivity. I know we've talked about that before. But I just feel that I need to to say my piece on that. I think this is different than what we've been doing.
Go ahead, Steve.
The the funds to pay the full-time inspectors come from the inspection fee?
Yeah, so the Building Inspection Fund to pay for all of the inspectors, um, the Building Inspection Fund covers um. Fifty percent, forty percent of my wages. Um, and uh so so ninety percent of the costs that would be incurred here would be coming out of the Building Inspections Fund enough from the general fund. About six thousand to sixty five hundred would would be incurred by the by the general fund and and with these changes.
Any more? Go ahead.
Yeah, this is just another one of those. Excuse me. Do we look at it now? Credit corrected now? Is how important is this now? Uh. Everything you're saying, I agree with. One of those that uh. We do not want to lose this. I mean, we want to make sure that we're giving our citizens the best deal. So in doing so, it's it seems that it's going down that path, but uh what are the right steps? Do we do it now or do we wait for this? I would agree with our our second item, which is the same thing, Tim. Uh. It is. I I agree in in bumping that up, making that that separation, you have to have that and uh. Um. But do we wait? Do we? Um. Take in the evaluation and.
Go ahead.
I would just, it's never been about whether it's deserved or not. That's that's not the question. I think if it was deserved, we'd have told. A lot of other departments, yes, by now, right? It's it's not about that. It's about being consistent because we have told. Our drains, our facilities, our prosecuting attorney. We've told them, no, you're waiting for the study. And so it's not about deserved. It's it's about consistency to me.
I would, I would argue that consistency with the prosecuting attorney's office and the decisions that were made in a six-one vote by the board about two months ago are are no different than this. Um, you had those attorneys moved up for fairness and parity reasons uh with the public defender's office. State law didn't require that that the prosecuting attorneys um attorneys were moved up to that level. Uh, but he brought him here and that was approved. And in doing so, you created a separation between subordinates there uh that was voted on again in a six-one move uh to make that action. That was just two months ago. So. To go back to, you know, my staff and explain to them that the board wants to be fair and and work through this and and show some. Some fairness and some parity, and it's not about whether it's deserved or not. It's a little difficult to explain to them when when they just seen it happen a month and a half or two months ago.
Um, and I think since we're kind of talking about both items here, one and two. Um, I. In my mind, they are a little bit different. Item one. I think there's an immediate need. We we've got to hire some. Inspectors and we need to keep the ones we have. Um. Item two, the two-step uh wage differential. I I think that the study will bear that out. Um. And. Um, like we talked about in finance. Uh, they've got a five-month timeline, which is pretty aggressive. I was pretty happy with that. Um. So I I think some of the more immediate things where it's very obvious that we've got a. Um, bump up some pay a little bit in order to get people here to do the work. Is a little different than uh the two separations uh of pay grades between uh directors and their subordinates. Just in my mind, there's a there's a difference there between those two things.
Go ahead.
Just a clarification, um. Administrator, the policy, is it a two-step policy? I thought it was a percentage policy.
If there's a, if there's a specific written policy about this, I I've I'm I have not seen it. Are you familiar with this?
It's a precedent.
I'm familiar with the separation that Seagull Water Study ended up with. And that is. I I think all electeds and their chief deputies are. Eh, maybe not all. But that's that's where that that separation come from. But I've never seen that the written policy. It might certainly be. Our 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 culture and you know, yeah, our 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 SOP, the way we've always, the way we've always done it, but I have not seen a a written policy. And like Commissioner Sweeney said, our. What's your policy? So.
There's not one department, there's not one department that has a single step of pay grade between a director and and. And their subordinates. There's not one in the county.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Um.
But in the way I'm looking at this, we've got a couple of options. I know I've said no, and again, it wasn't personal. It was I needed that objective wage study. I need a firm foundation. I need a basis. Then moving forward from that, Commissioner Sweeney's. Pointed out, we need a system that avoids all of this ever again as best we possibly can. So. We either. Say yes and go back and say for everybody that we turned down, bring it back to us and. We'll reevaluate. Now, and then let the wage study figure it all out and then redline here or bump up here. Uh, to me, that just sounds like a whole nother can of worms. So for me. Again, again, it's no disrespect. I you your logic, just as with prosecuting attorney Barbary, the logic is very sound. I cannot argue with that and I agree a hundred percent. But I have to have that basis, that firm foundation. In order to move forward and feel like that we're we're being. I realize we've been unfair in the past, but I want to set up a structure that's as fair as we can possibly make it and and create a system that. Uh, allows for nimble adjustments by empowering our department heads and our elected officials to make. Prudent financial good decisions about their staffs and how they pay them. Um, but that's my opinion. So either. Say yes and everybody come back and we'll look at them all or we say no and. Draw a line in the sand and wait for the wage study.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I uh. I I just don't see where we have the timeline to say no to the first part of this. I mean, I think this is so important. And and it's in, we're, it's basically paying for itself. I mean, it's not like it's, we're putting a stress on anything.
That's it, definitely.
Then the second, second thing is. Tim's right there with. All the rest. And if he's running that. I I don't have a problem with going, yes, yes. I mean, I I don't like the way this whole thing came down, but. At this point. I think you gotta do the first. And I think, you know, to do the first and then not do the second. For someone that's been with us that long, this is slap in the face. Just my opinion.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mister Warner.
Go ahead. Warner.
Yes, before I retired, not only was Parks and Recreation Director for Clinton County, but I also managed the uh community development for Clinton County. So I I know it's difficult to get tradespeople and and to keep them. You know, the revolving door, and this was before the pandemic because obviously I've been retired for. Going more than nine years, so. You know, I can see this. And I guess if if it is true that we have a uh two pay grade spread between the the department head and the next lowest one, you know, maybe we need to keep that. But. I guess the reason I'm going to vote for this one is that. It doesn't heavily impact the the general fund. It's a enterprise department. We need to give them the resources to to do the job that they need to do. Um, and I I guess, you know, once we get the wage study done, we'll have a basis. And again, if. Director's position is too well-paid, it'd be redlining. If not. We'll have to deal with it at that time, but.
Go ahead.
Well, I just want to make a comment about longevity and if if that's something we're going to honor, then we need to have a system for that, too. Um. Hmm. There's there's people in the audience who. Who dedicated, as Mr. Newport has, their entire career to the county. That we've won't won't even um entertain. So I think if if longevity is going to be important to us. That that is probably outside of the structure. Of wages and compensation, we can talk to AB cell about that if if tonight you go forward with that. I just don't want to equate longevity with wage increase. Once you top out on the the steps. We don't, we don't have anything. To honor longevity. The new Wellness Bank, I think, is is something we've tried to do in that regard.
Uh, I just want to say that I concur with Commissioner Hutchinson and Commissioner Jozenski. And the comments they made and the issues they they brought up and it's only six thousand dollars. So that's how I feel, my opinion.
In in the world we're in now, it, all these things, I think we. Year, a few years. How many people have?
Yeah, yeah.
You have another ten things to go through, yeah. Um. It's. It's difficult keeping people. Go ahead, so there it goes. Even the uh mental health, probably, so.
There's.
Yes, I guess we'll move this on to the next meeting. Uh, and I'll I'll read the second one, but it's, we've already talked about it. Consider approving the. Community Director. Salary in the pay grade seventeen and maintain the current employees step within the scale effective immediately.
Okay. A important and. Topic. Okay, our next item then is. Quest for annual. Delegation of school plan review and inspection authority for the Shepherd Public Schools and authorize the board chair to sign the same.
Yeah, so um this is a request from the Shepherd Public School Superintendent, uh, Mister Starr. He reached out last Friday. Um, requesting annual delegation. So under state law, um, public schools um. Are assigned their inspection services uh and plan review services to the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan does have a process that if the local enforcing agency, which would be us, Isabella County. Um, and the school district uh would like to do the services locally, we can. Uh, Shepherd reached out from a timing standpoint. They were looking at about six weeks to get through their plan review. Um, and to get them to issuance of permit. They asked if we would do an annual delegation. Uh, I talked to my inspectors, looked at our time load and we can we can handle that for them for a new facility that they're building. Um, which again keeps local dollars here uh in Isabella County. Um, and we've uh we've told them we would, so they filled out this annual delegation form, which has to be filed with the state of Michigan. And it needs the chairman's uh signature on it. So we would need that approval and chairman's signature. I was just reached out to today by Pleasant Public Schools Superintendent, uh, Miss Erleger. Uh, they're going through the same thing, so you'll see another one of these probably in two weeks.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Go on, I know the main campus for Shepherd's in Co-Township. And do you do the work for Co-Township, the uh building and?
Yes, we do.
And I know they also have a a new facility out in Fremont Township, the um. Uh, Maury. Uh, Maury Building out there, but and I think Fremont does their own building inspection, don't they?
Correct, they do. So any.
Doesn't have anything to do with uh.
Yeah, so any of the projects that they would have that would be in our jurisdiction, we would, we would have annual delegation over, we would do them locally. Uh, from the state of Michigan, but it happened to be in Fremont, they would have to file with Fremont as well. Mount Pleasant Public is going through that. We only do the trades, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, building comes out of the city of Mount Pleasant. I informed the superintendent today that she would need to file with them to do the building as as well if they wanted to.
And that's complicated.
It it really is. It is.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing and hearing none, that will be on our next meeting. This.
Okay, next item, consider approving curbside roll-off driver and curbside roll-off. Driver operator position to a pay grade eight effective immediately.
Good evening.
Evening.
Uh, before we get started, I have an announcement to make as I brought to committee. Um, a week ago or on the twenty-third of October. Me and Jake went to Gaylord ahead of the Michigan Sustainability Conference. Uh, we were part of a program with our other team members, Commissioner Angler, Commissioner Moreno. And uh Administrator Frost. And with that, we get gave a presentation on. Moving forward with the changes in the facility to help bring in some potential investors. And other collaborators, uh, other businesses to bring forward some ideas for um them upgrades to the facility. So we gave the presentation and we were. So we gave the presentation and we were actually awarded the best presentation overall at that um event. And that award came with ten thousand dollars to go towards a facility. So. That said, now.
Nice intro.
Thanks. In previous board meetings, uh, you had mentioned that if we had a job that job that was posted for quite some time that we were to ahead of receiving the wage study, that we would come before you and have a discussion on what the best foot forward best foot forward would be for us. Uh, we've had a position of part-time curbside roll-off driver posted for over two months now. And we have had zero qualified applicants to date. A few weeks ago, we came before the committee just to have an open discussion on what we should do in regards to this. Do we bring something before the whole board to have a discussion on this? So that's what we're here doing. And they did ask us to do a little bit of research on maybe what some of the haulers around us are starting their drivers out at and you know, what what does it take for an individual to carry or obtain a CDL license? So we did do a little bit of research. We reached out to a couple of the haulers and that are local to get some of that information. So that you know, in order for somebody to carry a CDL license, as of February seventh, twenty twenty-two, it is now a requirement that they have to go through an entry level driver training, meaning they have to go through some sort of schooling before they can obtain that license. Um, them individuals, after going through the schooling, they then have to obtain a DOT medical exam. And they get have to go through DOT drug screening. And that's all at the cost of the individual. That's right around five thousand dollars. In order for them to continue to carry that, every two years, they have to go through a medical exam uh, to make sure there's no medical condition that has been presented since the last screening. It is the county policy that it is at the department head's discretion if an employee is to conduct an alcohol screen if they're under the suspicion of use or in the event of an accident incident. In addition to the county policy, CDL holders are put into a DOT drug pool that requires them to be picked at random to conduct an alcohol drug screen. A DOT medical exam alcohol and drug screen is a requirement from the state for CDL holders and it is n- not a requirement uh, for uh all other county employees. When we reached out to the ways haulers to find out what they were, their starting wage was, we found that for individuals with zero experience, that's no license in hand, they'll start them out at twenty-one dollars an hour. And then they will pay for them to go through the schooling. They pay them their wages while they're going to the schooling. And once they obtain their CDL license, they then start them at a higher wage. Them haulers uh are also, they also offer a pretty sense of benefits package as well. Uh, one of them haulers actually offers their employees, offers to I'm sorry. They will reimburse them for college tuition, pay for their college, not only for the employee, but for all of their dependents. So what the county is offering to pay CDL drivers to come and start is fifteen thirty-eight an hour. The cap on that is nineteen oh one an hour. Now, we had come before the board before and asked to have their blessing to have the full range of the pay scale to be able to start an individual out at the top or if need be at nineteen oh one. But even when we do that, when they start out capped off, there's no room for an improvement for them. That's where they're at unless we get a cost of living increase. So with that being said, a lot of these, we haven't even gotten anybody to apply for this position. We are asking to bump the drivers up to a pay grade eight, which would make them a little bit more comparable to what the starting wage is for some of these major haulers. Any questions?
How many of these drivers do you have? Many positions?
A current, well, currently I have four, four drivers. We have three full-time and one part-time, but the operator or editor is included in this as well.
Before you earlier, um, that was, we wanted to be able to keep them in that DOT, right? Um, rotational.
And there's someone in that position that driver slash operator positions. Okay. So it's just a part-time position that's vacant currently.
Currently, yeah.
And and do you think, um, I'm going to ask you to speculate a little bit. Do you think that's because it's a part-time position that you've had difficulty filling that or? I know you've had some difficulty filling the full-time positions as well.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, you know, I mean, you you have to look at that and and we take into consideration on all of that. But we also have to forecast on what we can see coming in the future. We have two other drivers that there is potential could retire at most any time on us that could potentially cripple us as far as drivers are concerned if we cannot pay or attract people. But we have uh with them two drivers that really puts us in a situation that, you know, trying to look at all of this and not just of one individual part-time position. I'm looking at one full-time and one part-time that and one of the other part-times that could retire within the next uh possibly uh a year, uh and it could be less than that. Uh, so you know, we have to take all of that into consideration.
I I guess a comment too. I'm surprised that the county doesn't pay for those drug screens or medical exams.
We do. Okay. Once them positions are are a full-time position or a part-time position, once they're a county employee, yes. We do, we do pay for the medical screen and for the drug screens as well. Yes.
Drivers that aren't county employees?
Uh, no, no, we do not. But once, once we are, once an employee is hired, yes, that does fall under um, uh, you know, a budget line item for me on in our budget.
Okay.
Just a matter of, but the reason why it was discussed uh was is that that expense, when it comes on the private side uh, to get to that full-time position with a company, uh, it is at their expense.
Thank you.
We'll move that forward to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is consider approving consumer energy utility easement requests regarding Pierre Marquette Rail Trail and authorize the board chairperson to sign the same. We have Alexis Hansen, Parks and Recreation Director here to give us the details on this item. Hi Alexis.
Hi. Um, so Consumers Energy Company reached out at the beginning of October requesting a utility easement that would run across the rail trail, uh, Pierre Marquette Rail Trail in Wise Township. It's a pretty standard utility easement. They want to bore underground to install gas service to a resident of Wise Township. Our staff asked whatever questions we felt were relevant in regards to the project design and the easement itself. And there was really nothing from our department's perspective um, that seemed problematic with granting the easement. So um, then we forwarded the document that they prepared that consumers prepared onto um county legal counsel, who also had no issues with the agreement um and felt that we should, you know, bring it to the board and let you all decide. There was, there was really no issues. Um, a question did come up in committee as to whether or not approving this utility easement um, would maybe set the county up for a precedent to grant these in the future. Um, I did follow up on that question with so am. The response was basically that every time one of these easement requests come to us, it's going to be considered on a case-by-case basis. We always have the option to say no. Um, and there really is no precedent for these because every easement that a utility company gets is going to look different and and essentially be different. The other uh question that I followed up on was basically what is the alternative if we did not approve this? Because of the alternate design options, basically the resident would not be able to connect to gas through Consumers Energy. So and then, uh, lastly, there's no cost at all to the county for approving this. Um, everything right down to the recording fee is covered by consumers. Um, and there's no interruption to use of the rail trail again, because this is, this is bored underground. It it really shouldn't cause any issue for us. So basically, you know, the easement is all set to go. If it's approved, it just needs to be signed and kind of consumers will take it from there.
Any questions or comments? Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I was uh working with the committee to bring the rail trail to the uh county. And I know the uh, the the line was owned by, I think it was the Midland Community Foundation at the time, and they they did give their portion to Midland County because their trail was pretty much finished. And uh, they had some uh covenants that went with it. And I can't remember what they were. But I know you said you, the deed was looked at. There was nothing in the deed specifically. Could there be another document, uh, covenant set?
The, well, so the um, Consumers has an employee whose role is specifically acquisitions of easements. And so he did the background research to locate the deed. He actually found, you know, the um, the specific document where the property was transferred from Midland County to Isabella County and did all that research. Um, and again, all that was provided to county legal counsel. There wasn't anything deed-wise that seemed problematic. And also just from a land management standpoint, I I wanted to make one more note that the trail is already being used publicly. It's never going to be used for anything else. So having these connections run underneath it is, it's allowing a dual-purpose use that it's not going against the intended use of the property and um in my opinion, and obviously it's for the board to decide, but in my opinion, there's no really good reason not to move forward with this. Um, and and a lot of research has gone into it on my end before it came to the committee.
I do remember the community foundation was was concerned about uh enabling over-surfaced movement over the trail with driveways and the like and and easements. So I would make sure that there is not a covenant in place that may be separate of the deed. The only other thing I would uh mention, I looked at the uh, the deed and it's kind of open-ended. And I just kept thinking about my uh grandparents' farm property. They gave a easement for overhead electrical. And before my grandparents passed away, that easement was used for multiple other transportation of of uh liquids underground and there were some spills. So it'd be nice to have these easements very tightly constructed so that if it's a one for just natural gas to a residence, then it specifically says that. This basically says that uh they have the right in perpetuity to manage uh underground pipe or pipes. So this may not be something that you can connect to or somebody else would need to have, could use that easement for something else. But it'd be nice to, as these easements come before us, that they're very tightly worded.
Yeah, I mean, I I can't argue with that at all. Again, just the easement as it's presented was reviewed and um, I know that that's the standard agreement that consumers, you know, uh, we never went back to say.
Give you the easement that is going to benefit them. But once that easement is there, there may be some opportunity in the future to use that easement for something else and you've given up that right. You don't have that control anymore. So.
I would add, I know when working on the Consumers easement for the sheriff's office and correctional facility, the couple that we've had and working with legal counsel, their response to me was kind of like, we could suggest these changes, but it's not, it's it's Consumers Energy, it's not likely, but they're willing to. So I do think they have a template uh that they use for this and I I think, I think it's moving mountains to to get that template changed.
And again, I did ask many questions about the design of the project. And I know when you were talking about the the deed earlier, you said something about over-surface and I did clarify that this is specifically an underground utility connection that will not interrupt, even even during the construction phase, it will not interrupt use of the trail. And also just for, you know, to be completely transparent on to the information that I gathered. Um, I, it sounds like based on what Consumers has said, um, basically, if we don't approve this, they're not going to fight it at this point, but that's just going to make this Isabella County resident not have the option to connect to to the gas. So again, it's it's up to you. That's basically the information that I have. I'm happy to follow up on any further questions. This was not something that the Parks Department, you know, supported or were of us. And I kind of tried to vet it before bringing it to you and it's up for you all to decide.
Comfortable if the easement was very specific to underground uh, gas pipe to a residence and not leave it open uh for other uses. I mean, I think it's in the best interest of the county to to do that. Be brought back later.
I, you know, I don't want to misspeak. I haven't read this over today. I haven't read it in a couple of days. Um, that may be in this contract already. It might be worth.
I looked at it and it's not.
Okay.
Pretty much open-ended.
Um, well, I guess based on what you said later tonight, if you want me to have further communication back to consumers, just please let me know.
Anything else? That was a biggie.
Okay, our next item.
I I was just saying, just to add on. We also, we really need to weigh the our constituent in Isabella County too. So we have to keep the 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 county resident who wants to get gas and this is their only way, right? So um, I'm just, your, your point is valid. It's it's and it's open-ended. Uh, but it and it is a Consumers Energy. Uh, it looks like this one has been probably printed out like a hundred times, but in in the last month. But um, I guess my point being that, you know, they are, they are a resident and are look seeking to get a utility. So um, if we have to weigh that in our concerns at this point.
So you think we want to wait two weeks and get the answer and get it on the paper?
Well, it'd be another month.
Yeah, I'm not saying that we shouldn't allow the natural gas to
Yeah.
To that residential business. We don't know where that
Right.
Where it's.
But they, yeah. I mean, if they don't get the easement, they won't get the gas, so.
There uh, just, there was um, the actual response that I, when I asked the follow-up questions from um Attorney Perron, I'm happy to share with any of the commissioners. I could even forward that email tonight if that helps in making your decision, just so you can see the response that came from legal counsel. If you'd like, just let me know.
I have one more question. What, is this for residents or is it for a commercial use?
It's for residents. Um, in the, it's actually a home, a single-family unit um at ninety-seven fifty Wise Road. Um, so it's in this kind of weird corner where two roads are angling and the rail trail is running along between the home and Saginaw Road. That that's what causes the increased expense if they don't come across the rail trail, because then their other options are actually coming across a county road. So then their, their cost goes up and they're coming back to us probably for an easement anyways if they if they were to move forward with. So then their, their cost goes up and they're coming back to us probably for an easement anyways, if they, if they were to move forward with a different option. But I will say they, um, I was pretty much told if, if we don't grant this, it goes astronomically higher and the resident can't afford the connection at that point. Um, I, I don't know if you have the staff report in front of you, but there is a map of this residence and how it's situated. Okay.
I, I looked at that map and it doesn't look like there's any residences very close to that, that, so I certainly understand, uh, the, the easement coming in from the north under the trail and that, that property is right on the trail, right next to us.
Well, getting different signals here. You can put it on the, uh, item for the next meeting, but could you email us that, that?
Yeah, I'll send it in. Um, you know, I, like I said, I don't mind doing additional follow up research, um, finding out if there's a precedent for this anywhere else on the rail trail. Um, I have good communication with Midland County. I could always reach out to them. Um. So I guess, like I said, just based on what you decide tonight, let me know what you would like me to do to follow up and I'm happy to do it.
Okay. And again, I, I'm not opposed to the easement. I'm just thinking you could add a line to that easement that it is specifically for natural gas service to that residence that would solve it all.
Yep.
And if it delays it for two weeks, that can make a whole lot of difference to either the family or to the county.
You could approve it contingent on that being added. And that way it wouldn't even have to wait for another board meeting. The board can do that.
I think that's a great addition of that.
Of including that language in that, and that way if consumer says no, then here comes Alexis again next time to say, you know, because their action would be to include it with the additional language. So if, if that doesn't get added, then you'd have to come back to the board. But if they do add it, then there can be no reason to come back.
And then it wouldn't be signed by the chairman until that's been added and.
Correct, correct.
Sounds like a good solution that was to or not.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I can make the amendment motion, uh, tonight.
Okay.
As we had in the colder months of the, the year, I'm sure gas becomes more important, so let's be nimble.
Okay. Then that will be on tonight's with all the, uh, preparation and so forth. Okay.
Yeah, next item, consider approving the annual Fisher Annex lease renewal for Deerfield Nature Park from January first, two thousand twenty four, four through December thirty first, two thousand twenty four. And authorize board chair to sign this thing.
Um, so the Fisher Annex is a hundred and sixty acre portion of, um, Deerfield Park. And the only reason that it is allowed to be a portion of Deerfield Park's existing, um, footprint is because of this lease agreement that goes back to nineteen eighty three. So, um, Deerfield Park is five hundred and ninety one acres in total. Our largest county park, um, arguably our most popular county park. Um, and a significant natural area and recreational area in the region. Um, so that hundred and sixty acres, when you're talking about five hundred and ninety one total is a significant portion. The nice thing about this agreement is that you do the maintenance, um, and we have the allowed use, the cost to us, other than just the maintenance and the staff time is the annual taxes. Um, based on years and current estimates, the cost for that for this year would be, uh, five thousand four hundred and sixty eight dollars and ninety nine cents. Um, oh, that was for twenty twenty three, excuse me. The estimate for twenty twenty four is just somewhere in the ballpark of five thousand eight hundred dollars. Um. And Fisher Companies has already executed their end of the lease. They're happy to continue to move forward with this agreement with us. Um. And I mean, if you've been on the board or involved for some time, you're really aware of this. If there's other questions though, we can, we can talk about it further.
I think this is one where we say thank you.
I agree.
So, um, you're probably not aware, but, um, the, uh, Fi- uh, Fisher Annex, uh, we actually had a grant for Natural Resource Trust Fund. It was the highest ranking point, uh, grant approved that particular year. And we hea- we held it for almost three to four years because we did the, we did the required appraisals and didn't come up to the value that Bud Fisher had for the property. So after four years, we gave up the grant. But I, I think we need to keep a communication. I know it's in a trust now. But we need to keep a communication with the, the, the trust, the, the members of the family that are involved so that eventually we might be able to apply for another grant and bring it permanently into, uh, that park. Because you're right, it's a, that, that eighty acres adds a lot to the park. Its loss would diminish the value of that park considerably.
So, yeah, and it's actually double that. It's a hundred and sixty acres.
Hundred and sixty.
Um, and, and it is in, uh, we're renewing our master plan. Um, this property and others like it are part of that master plan and will continue to be moving forward, so.
Just to keep contact with the family in a good, good way. You, you've got that type of personality, you can be able to sell the idea.
Well, rest assured, it's, it's in the master plan and, and, um, I have made contact with connections with the Fisher family and company and, um, they've been very welcoming, so. We're establishing a relationship. Any other questions on that before my third and final?
So we'll move that forward to tonight.
Okay, our next item is consider approving the American Rescue Plan Act Local Parks and Trails, Michigan Spark Grant Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Three dash oh nine between the Michigan DNR and Isabella County for Herick Recreation Area Effect, A R P, A R P A zero one seven four and authorize the board chair to sign the same. So what do we have here, Alexis?
Just a lot of very good news. Um.
Good.
This, this grant, um, was a huge success for the Parks and Rec Department. Um, three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars allowing us to do some major much needed renovations to the Herick Recreation Area Campground portion. Um, so the funding, the scope of the project includes renovating, um, the bath house, uh, making it more ADA accessible, um, doing some really functional upgrades to that building, upgrading the pit toilet, which is out near the cabins there, um, and replacing, uh, the playground there, which is kind of at the end of its lifespan at this point. So it's just a really positive project and renovation for, um, one of our beautiful parks. And the agreement, although it's a long contract, it's fairly straightforward. Um, there's no match required to this, so we get the three hundred and nineteen thousand. We stay within the scope of the project. Um, and we make some really great changes and renovations to the park. Uh, this has been reviewed by county legal counsel. It's been read thoroughly by myself and other members of the park staff. Um, we have, uh, contact with Samantha Davis from the DNR who helped us through the, um, Natural Resources Trust Fund grant that we just completed. And she's kind of guiding us along with what needs to happen for this grant. So, um, a pretty good understanding of the agreement and we just need to get it approved so that we can do the onboarding and move forward with, um, starting the work on this project.
Here he is again. Thirty eight years. I was hired and finished that project. The grant had already been, uh, applied by my predecessor. But what I was really disappointed in, and you're not going to be able to do it with the spark grant, is that it's an undersized building because the health department, their standard for fixtures, toilets and all, um, doesn't allow for a fully modern campground. That's why you have the vault toilets. And, uh, at some point in time, maybe, I don't know if you can add to that building or put another building on so that the whole building can be considered a modern campground. Because right now I think the licensing is for so many sites, modern, so many sites rustic. Because that building is not adequate and, uh, the fixture standards, uh.
The campground bath house, is that the building or?
The campground bath house.
Okay. Yeah.
Too few fixtures to, to, uh, with the health department requirements for construction of campgrounds to have meet the, a modern campground throughout.
Okay, well, good to know.
Maybe I should stop it and talk to you sometime.
If you can find me. Place lately, um. Yeah, again, it'd be a really positive thing for, for the park system as a whole, so.
That building does need renovation.
Yes. Um, and, uh, uh, also at Herick on Monday, they're starting the construction of our other playground that we just purchased. So just, Herick's going to be undergoing a really wonderful transformation in the next year. And, um, all credit goes to the park staff. Obviously I'm just kind of coming in new and, and taking all these projects on. But Rachel Rollin, um, Miranda Walker, Nicole Manley, they were responsible for getting this grant to where it is and Sue Ann. Um, so they're just, they've done a wonderful job securing funding for these projects.
Hold on. Hey, if there's no other comments or questions on our agenda for just in a few minutes, probably.
Our next, our next item. Consider approving the individual service contract between Isabelle County, Commission on Aging and Larry Davis and Paul Stickler for services as bulk food meal delivery drivers effective October first, two thousand twenty three through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty four and authorize the board chair to sign this thing.
Hello there. So these, this, we're just renewing contracts, personal service contracts with these two individuals who have been bulk drivers for a long time for Commission on Aging. Um, so basically what this job entails, uh, they pick up the meals that have been made from scratch here and they deliver them out to our congregate sites, um, Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays, which is a huge help. Um, they also can help take some of our home delivered meals out to those sites if that makes it um, closer for the volunteer driver to pick them up there and deliver in those outlying areas. So, um, these guys, these gentlemen are great. We love working with them and we would love to continue.
Yep, two outstanding individuals. Uh, been with us a long time.
Yes.
Thank them very much. We have any other questions? If not, we'll move that forward tonight's meeting.
Okay, number nine, consider approving the fiscal year twenty twenty four Isabella County Commission on Aging Nutrition Site Agreements for Congregate and Meal Sites with the Sep- Shepherd United Methodist Church at a monthly rate of one hundred and fifty dollars. Fremont Township Win Community Building at the monthly rate of three hundred dollars. Rose Bush Manor at the monthly rate of ninety dollars and Sherman Township Waiverman at a month dollars and authorize the board chair to sign the same.
So this is just renewing the existing contracts we have in place with all of these organizations, allowing us to provide our meals, our congregate meals at those satellite locations and the, the different areas of the county so that we can, um, get more folks to be able to come out and, and socialize and get a great meal. Um, the rates have not changed since I've been here in the six years I've been here. So they've, they've kept the rates the same and allows us to occupy the space and covers utilities. So, um, that's a great help for us. And these meals are provided Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so three days a week.
Any questions on this or comments? Okay, that'll be on our agenda at our next meeting.
Your tenth item, consider approving the Regional Seven Area Agency on Aging Purchase of Services Provider Agreement along with the addendum and the Business Associate Agreement and authorize the board chair to sign the same.
So again, this is another renewal of another program that we're, we participate in with, um, Region Seven. We've been doing this since nineteen ninety nine. The waiver program is basically a program that helps us to provide services to individuals who, um, have a lot higher level of need than what we can provide. So then they go to like a waiver program, um, and then they can then reach out to organizations in that community to provide help or assistance. So then we are able to help provide homemaking and home delivered meals to these clients, even though they're not technically our client. Through this agreement, we're able to do that and be reimbursed for those services. Um, and in last fiscal year, we did bring in, um, just almost twenty one thousand dollars by providing these services. So it is substantial and we're able to, to provide local care to individuals in our community with that. They did also one of the new addendums that came before I brought the contract forward, um, premium pay, which was going away, did not, so they extended it again. Um, so this is what happened. This became a thing in COVID. Um, it was two dollars and thirty five cents an hour to those in-home aides, which we have ten of them on our staff of our thirty six staff. Ten are those aides. Um, and so that two thirty five, they upped it to three twenty an hour this year for this fiscal year. Um, the administrative fee, they were providing twenty nine cents an hour to us to process this payment for, to cover payroll taxes. They bumped that up to forty cents an hour. So this is for those direct hours that our staff work with clients. They're able to, to, to get this additional and is all paid for by the state.
Hey, any other questions? We'll move that forward to tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our final item is consider approving the delinquent water billing rule as submitted by the Board of Public Works, which constitutes delinquent service charges of six months or more as of September first, twenty twenty three for properties within the Lake Isabella Forest Number Two subdivision, Village of Lake Isabella, Township of Sherman, County of Isabella, State of Michigan, and therefore constitutes a lien on the property as provided by the founding of Isabella Ordinance Number One of nineteen seventy five as amended. We have Robert, will it be uh, Isabella County Drain Commissioner to give us the details on this?
Um, it's basically, it's better than, it's, it's not good, but it's better than last year.
Yeah, we see these every year, right? And i- isn't it the case that some people don't even live there? Who lives other places?
Some, we adopted a ready to use fee a few years ago. Well, it's original, but they raised it. Yeah, every lot has a ready to use fee and it's lots that don't have houses on them and people just. And then there's a few of them that are using water. See by the amounts on there.
Right. So the total was thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty four dollars and seventy two cents, correct?
Correct.
This is a pretty straight spread. Anybody got any questions or comments? Go ahead.
When we saw this in two thousand eighteen, um, at least twice as long a list or more. Uh, I don't know if that's because we're taking if our treasurer is foreclosing on them and we're just, they're slowly whittling away those lots. Or if they're, if people are now paying their bills for water, but.
And just hope for the best, I guess. Any other questions or comments? Okay, that's the last item we have. Thank you, gentlemen. Work of the Human Resources and Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, we have no intergovernmental affairs, no administrator controller issues, no unfinished business. Before we move to item eleven, um, and I didn't notice this before we approved the agenda, so my apologies. But usually before we go into closed session, we move that general public comment up before we kick everyone out for the closed session, uh, in case anyone wants to, um, come up for general public comments. So I would, at this time, entertain a motion to move general public comments uh, it up to right now and switch that with the closed session. If someone wants to make that.
So moved. Moved and supported all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Then we will do general public comment.
Okay. No, no, you can go ahead.
You know, sometimes I'm the Pollyanna person, um, but I've said it before, I know we can do this. We can move forward, we can get past this. But not if we're waffling back and forth. I think Tim has a good point. I think Jake has a good point. I think I had a good point a year ago when I pointed out my employees, I think the drain. I think I had a good point a year ago when I pointed out my employees. I think the drain office had a good point several years ago when they pointed theirs out. I think that. With what we're going through right now, the board and administration. Need to come up with whatever their decision is, not telling you what you need to do, because that's not my problem. I got enough problems right now. But you need to make a decision, make that decision together and stick by it. If you're going to consider. Reevaluating, making new classifications, we're all going to be in line. Um, I don't know if you guys have money that you're hiding that we don't know about, but. Like we said, there's a huge group of us that have been waiting. A year and a half ago, we hired somebody. We tried really hard to find somebody. Everybody in our area was paying way more than we are, and we're talking Clare County, who's not as large as we are. And that's the starting wage. Macosta County, who's not as large as we are. Gresham County, who's not as large as we are. Midland, don't even think about it. They're way above us. We got somebody. We finally got somebody. He worked part of a day and didn't come back the next day because he said the responsibilities were way more than he thought. And there's no way he was going to work for that. I think. When you talk about, obviously, we want to treat tradespeople fairly. And that's correct, but we have to consider the fact that in our offices, nobody has learned this job. Before they come, we're all training tradespeople. We're training them to be a tradesperson and after they're there for a while, they've learned that trade. When we bring someone in at just above minimum wage and we keep them at that rate and, you know. Every year, we're going to give them a little bit of a bump unless they're going to get, you know, unless we get a cola and then you get. Right now, those are the people that were asking to help us go into a building. Full of all kinds of stuff. We're asking them to help us purge old records. We're in an eighty-five degree building that had sixty-five percent humidity when we first went in. That's not easy. Our employees are getting sick in there. They're not feeling well. And then we're talking about. In six months, eight months, whatever, if a millage fails, we're going to have to make drastic cuts. We're talking about these employees. Where are we going to get the money? Employees are our money. That's where we spend things, but that's also where our income comes from. They are the people that bring that money in. So I think we need to look at. What we're talking about as far as budget cuts. And if we're going to make decisions and we're going to. Change our, our policy or whatever it is, I think we need to be transparent about it. Because that's what's going to happen if we waffle back and forth and we say, oh, one group is better than another group. We're back to the same old clouded mess that we had before. That's how we got into this problem was lack of transparency. That's what happened with the last wage classification. The other thing that we were talking about was longevity. I would like to see something done about longevity. Back in two thousand and eight, there was an employee in the Register of Deeds Office that had been there. Since the building was put in place, she started in nineteen seventy-two. And in two thousand and eight, she retired shortly thereafter, but in two thousand and eight, they had talked about giving. And it wasn't a bonus. It wasn't anything. They were going to give them some kind of a little clock thing or something. It never happened. The clocks disappeared. Nobody ever got them. Nobody was ever acknowledged. We had a party planned out here at the Commission on Aging. And I think the year was two thousand and eight, but I might be off by a year or two. We had a horrible snowstorm. It was our holiday party that year. We were supposed to come out here. We had to cancel the party because of the horrible snowstorm. And so they were supposed to have something later to acknowledge the people, but they never did. So. It had been something that had been talked about a long time before that and something that had just never happened. So I think that's something that a lot of employees would like to have happen, whether it's. Whether it's something that is. Monetary or non-monetary, I think that the people that have been here for their whole careers and we have. During COVID, we had a lot of people that retired that had been here literally their whole careers. And you think about those people. You know, when we talk about. Abating asbestos, could they have exposure? You know, we may have exposed these people. I know when for years, there's a little closet across the. Away from my office and in that closet is the, all of the. Telephone wires and everything. There also used to be a hot water heater up there on a shelf. And below that hot water heater was a microfilm machine. And every week I got to spend the day in that. Little closet that didn't have an exhaust fan. With chemicals doing microfilm and the microfilm would come out. And there was an outlet and you had to grab the wet microfilm before it hit that outlet. As it's coming out, there's a plug plugged in there that didn't quite go in and you'd catch the microfilm and stuff. That's, that's what we had. So these people that have been here forever are used to that type of an atmosphere. We're used to. Making do with what we had, but I think the people that are coming in now are not used to that. And so we're going to have to make some changes. I think they're used to more transparency. A lot of us. Had that non-transparent thing for a long time. But I think as we go forward, we need to make sure that if we make a decision, that we keep that decision. Or if we're going to change paths, make it clear that we're changing paths and we're heading in a different direction. And this is what we plan on doing now.
Thank you. Anyone else for general public comment? And do we have anyone online, Michelle? Pardon me? Someone has raised their hand. Oh, if you're online and you would like to make a public comment, just raise your hand.
Star nine.
Star nine.
If they're on the phone. If they're the caller, they would press star nine to raise their hand.
I don't see anyone still. Okay. Uh, then we'll move along down to the closed session at this time. We'll entertain a motion to move into a closed session to discuss collective bargaining agreement strategy. Yes, sir.
I'm wondering if we shouldn't, I see that Bonnie Trosky's been on here patiently waiting. I wonder if we shouldn't take B first.
She's on for A, sir. She's on for A. She's, she's on for the collective bargaining.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into closed session under section eight C of the Open Meetings Act to discuss collective bargaining agreement strategy.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to enter into a closed session under section eight C of the Open Meetings Act to discuss collective bargaining agreement strategy.
That does need to be a roll call.
We need to roll call that. We have.
Because it needs to be a two-thirds vote to go in.
All right. We have a roll call on that, Madam Clerk. Yes.
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 It's not this one.
Yeah.
Next.
Yes.
I'll come get him.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I'm okay with you if Melissa stays for this.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And and then remember, Michelle's going to move us to a break room. Michelle, do we need? To turn mics off? You're okay. Okay. Oh, we're being moved, so that makes you feel. And there's no one else in there but us and Bonnie at that point. We're frozen.
But the mics that are going to go dead, which I'm going to go and do that now, are the Bs and the Cs. So yours won't work. Yours will not work. No, you have an A, so you're good. You have a D, you have a B, you have a C, you have a C, you have an A, you have a spare.
Bonnie, can you hear us?
Michelle.
Bonnie.
Oh.
She can't, okay.
Meeting ID.
Did you get out, Jim?
Yeah, I got out of the other.
He's, he must have left the room, Jim.
All of a sudden.
Michelle Marino maybe is still in the other meeting, I think.
Okay. Here.
Now, did you actually exit that as a whole session? I think you did. You've got to get back into the meeting and I'll bring you.
Here, I'll help him with that while you do the other, Michelle.
You only needed to turn it off if you were a B or a C.
Did you need this?
Okay.
You know, let you.
Okay. Yeah, I do. Thanks.
I was listening. It's not easy.
Anybody with a B shouldn't be heard.
Yeah.
We're spared.
Hello.
I can share.
Will you? I'll have to go if you don't, you know.
That doesn't sound like I need it for this.
Okay.
She'll give it back to me when we go back out.
I'll save her. For Connie.
He's turning off your mics. He's sitting here hearing this.
We're working out the mics, Bonnie.